Was that that poll rule? I think it was. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to be here today this evening. I appreciate you here and all those out in TV land. Thank you for attending tonight. Welcome to candidate forum for both the city council, Cholo City Council, and also Navajo County sheriffs. We'll start tonight with a pledge. And then I'll talk about some rules that will welcome the candidates and we'll go from there. We've asked Councilman Mike Alsop to lead us in the pledge. So if you could all rise and make his way up.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Again, thank you all for coming. We appreciate your attendance. I'm gonna talk to you about some rules and a format that we're gonna cover tonight. Most of the reason for the format is so that we can get as many questions in as in the timeframe that we have. And then I'll talk a little bit about city council and we'll proceed there. We're gonna have a forum tonight for the city council. Following that, and that should be about 50 minutes to an hour. And then following that, we'll move right into questions for the county sheriff candidates. And that should be another 30 minutes. Okay, rules and format. Each candidate will be given one minute to provide an opening statement. The order of response has been predetermined. Before you got here, they pulled for the chairs that they're in and we'll rotate through that. After the opening statement, we will move to the questioning portion of the debate. At that point, the first person that's called upon will have two minutes to give their answer to the question. Then all others will have one minute to respond. Again, the order of response has been randomly predetermined. Gary Moore, to my right, is here and will serve as a timekeeper. Thank you, Gary, for Gary's our Cholo Board of Directors president this year. We appreciate his service and he's here to help out with that along with Jill Gray, one of our ambassadors. So, thank you to them. Gary has, they both have some signs that they'll signal the candidates at 30 seconds, at 15 seconds, and then to stop. At the end of the question period, we will move to final statements from each of the candidate. And they will have two-minute time limits for those. Again, it'll be the same order that's been predetermined. So because we're gonna talk to city council first, I want to talk to you a little bit about and relay some information about that vote. The primary election is Tuesday, August 30th. On the ballot, you will have, you'll find the mayor's seat and three council member seats. These are each for a four-year term. Current incumbents, those whose seats expire this year, December of 2016, are Mayor Darryl Seymour and council members Rennie Crittenen, Connie Kikavas, and Gene Kelly. They are running for the council. And also running for the council are Mike Bosley and William Thomas. Also on the primary election ballot is Proposition 407. It's where the city is asking for voters to permanently adjust Cholo's expenditure base by four and a half million. Cholo's current spending base was established by a statewide vote in 1980 and is based on the city's local expenditures from 1980 and its population from 1978, adjusted for inflation. So those are the things that you'll see on that primary ballot in August of this month. Lastly, the two polling places for Cholo are City Campus Gym, which is at 620 East McNeil, and then also the Frontier Conference Room in the Navajo County Health Services Building, which is at 600 North Ninth Place. So, Mr. Bosley, you are on spot one. You know what, guys? And I'm gonna focus on questions and I'm gonna forget where we started. So if I forget that, you can throw a pencil at me or remind me. I appreciate your nudge and let me know who's next. But I, but we'll start with you. Remember, this is for one minute for your opening remarks. Please introduce yourself and let us know why you're running for city council, Mr. Bosley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Bosley. And I am running for city council because I want to represent a voice of Cholo that may not currently be represented right now. There's a younger generation that is coming up. We need to encourage younger business owners into this town. And that is what I want to be the voice for. I love this town. We have done a great job of making it through a very tight fiscal time. Now is the time to turn the corner and actually grow this community to be even stronger than it is. We have an amazing outdoor presence. We need to continue our tourism. And if you vote for me, then we will be able to hopefully make this a stronger community and a more unified community.
Thank you.
I'm Darryl Seymour. I'm currently running for the office of mayor. I have served on the city council for 12 years and I have been the current mayor of the past four years. I'm grateful to have the opportunity of being here tonight. I'm thankful for the chamber for putting this together, hosting this forum this evening, so we get able to better know those people who are running for office. I'm grateful for Cholo and for its citizens who live in this community. And one of the great things of being born and raised in Cholo, I'm a product of Cholo. I'm a product of Cholo High School and things that have happened in our community for many years. And so I just want your continued support that we can continue to develop Cholo in a very organized, in a very productive way for our citizens and keep the close-knit family lives that we have here and the values of this great White Mountains. Thank you.
My name is Rennie Crittenen. I'm a native Arizonan, born and raised in Arizona. As far as the Cholo contributions, I was the Cholo Planning and Zoning Commission from 2002 to 2006. Been on Cholo City Council on 2006 to 2010 and then 2012 to present. My vision of the city of Cholo is to continue to provide the residents with excellent services, including public safety, water, sewer, streets, great libraries, and recreation without increasing taxes. I am an anti-tax person and I do not believe in increasing taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gene Kelly. And geez, I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think it was five or six years, and on the council longer than any of you can remember. But I enjoy the job. I would ask you to allow me to continue in it. I pledge to always be studied on the issues and that I will dedicate my time and be at the meetings. I thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Kikavas. I appreciate you all being here and taking the time out of your evening to come and represent your community. I am a fourth-generation product of Cholo, as well as, you know, like Darryl said. Lived here my whole life and I've actually worked for the city of Cholo for the majority of that life. I started with the city of Cholo as a clerk when I was 18 years old, worked for the city for 31-plus years, and have been on the city council after I took a little bit of time off. And I worked for the hospital. And I have a true interest in making sure that we have excellent quality care here on the mountain. I love this community and I want to continue the focus of quality of life and continue the many traditions that we have and we've been blessed with.
Thank you.
I thought I shut the time off. I thought I shut the sound off.
Okay, this next question is regarding Proposition 407. And I know at the beginning I announced that we'll have two minutes for the initial question, then one minute following for each of that. But, you know, this is a very important question to address, or topic to address. And I ran through the math before I sat down here and we have time to do this. So what we're gonna do is let each candidate offer two minutes for each council. Mayor Seymour, this goes to you first and then we'll go right down the line and through the rotation. The question is simple. What is your understanding of the permanent base ba- pay, excuse me, permanent base ballot option, Proposition 407? And what is your position on it?
Well, understanding Proposition 407 is probably the most important measure that we have on this ballot for the citizens of Cholo. There isn't anything that's more important to our livelihood for our long-term of our community. Understanding Proposition 407 is something that we have operated similar for the past 20 years by approving home rule. But what we're asking for is a permanent adjustment so that we don't have to keep coming back every four years to ask the voters to approve something. And that's a big cost to the city of Cholo every four years. By adjusting the permanent base expenditure limitation by $4.5 million, it doesn't mean that we have four and a half more million dollars to spend. We don't create money that we don't already have. It just tells us that that base limit that we tie everything to has been increased. And so by being able to do that, it allows us to keep the same services and things that we've enjoyed as citizens here in the community. Proposition 407 does not increase any taxes whatsoever. It does not cost the citizens a dollar more than what they're currently spending in any measure right now in any way. And so it's one of the things that I encourage you to vote yes on Proposition 407. I'm very much in favor for it because I know what it can do and what it doesn't. The alternative is, if for some reason it didn't pass, we then have the option of passing home rule. And if for some reason, if that never passed, then yes, it would be a hardship on the community. And at that point, we would still have the money that we would have to spend, but we would be fined by the state of the tune of around $800,000. So Proposition 407 keeps local control. It allows us to continue to spend and to balance our budgets the way that we currently do. So I encourage you to vote yes for 407.
Let me go in a little more detail about the way 407 started. The state legislature decided that they wanted to regulate how much the cities could spend. And so what they passed was a bill that, based on population at the time, and then the, we'll say, the Consumer Price Index, that is what you can increase your budgets by. When you get a city like the city of Cholo that has grown more than a lot of cities through that timeframe, we have more of the infrastructure that we need to spend money on, whether it be streets, sewer, water, and those types of things. Right now, we have a overall city budget of somewhere in the neighborhood of $56 million. If we followed Proposition 4, or pardon me, followed the rules that the state legislature passed back in 1980, we would only be allowed to spend $13 million. What that means is that we would be shutting down many of the services in town, including library, parks and recreation, swimming pool, all kinds of things like that that we could not, even though we have the tax revenues to supply those things, we would not be able to spend that money. So I highly recommend that you vote for Proposition 407. The other thing that we as city council have set up on 407, if the council wants to increase the taxes in the city of Cholo, it has to be a supermajority. We did that for this. That means six out of seven people would have to vote for it. Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you. I would like to share with you, it's my thought that back when they did this, it was a bunch of well-intentioned people trying to stop runaway spending by government. And what they kind of missed was the biggest violators of that were the ones that were able to continue to violate. The most conservative cities were the ones that would be penalized the most. And understand that the base of population does, only counts those full-time residents. It doesn't count our summer people that we very much want, I think you all want. They pay a lot of sales tax. We don't get an increase for an increase in population of part-time residents. We don't get to spend any new revenue. One example is after the swimming pool was built, we charged a little bit of money for you to use it. We could collect that money, but we couldn't spend it, not even on the pool. They just kind of forgot a couple of things, okay? So by doing this, we're increasing the limit if you say yes, but it's not limit less. And it still requires 100% a balanced budget. And as Councilman Crittenen already pointed out, we can't even raise the taxes with two negative votes. In other words, it takes a six-vote majority to raise taxes if you pass this. If you don't, it only takes four. Well, there's no talk on the current council of raising taxes. So I don't expect they're gonna be trying to do that. It, bottom line is, it saves us money and it does not release the required law of a balanced budget. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kikavas.
Thank you all for clarifying what 407 is, right? And I agree with, ditto, but also it does save us money and I'll expand on that. Right now, we spend quite a bit of money every four years to go out to the voters on home rule. Like it, like it says, it's a permanent adjustment. We don't have to, we wouldn't have to spend those monies any further. Cholo has been very conservative and we've been very fortunate to run our budgets in a conservative manner. We make sure that when we do budget, we're, we are not spending the amount that we're allocated or the taxes that we bring in. We make sure that we set aside at least 5% of that. We also have committed to the citizens that we will reserve at least a million dollars in reserves for a rainy day. But the councils of the past have not only met that million-dollar limit, they've added to it and there's several million dollars in that fund now. Cholo has also been conservative enough to make sure that they have a five-year capital improvement program so that we're planning for the future. It's not just a year-at-a-time thing. We are always planning for the future. If we aren't able to spend those dollars that we have and still retain all of those reserves, we would have to cut services to our citizens and that's something that we don't want to have to do.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley.
Yes, actually, everything they said, even down to what little thing I was gonna say Connie took. The home rule is passed ever since I've lived here. I don't think there is a problem with it. I don't think there would be a problem with it passing. I think everyone should vote yes. If you look at it like this, we're at the state of seeing our federal government overrun everything. This is an opportunity for the state to be out of the picture. This is time for Cholo to take financial responsi- and Cholo has done that. In fact, I want to say, within the last month, Cholo was awarded the Financial Apartment, correct me if I'm wrong, that they received an award for being fiscally amazing, was not the correct word.
Six or 10.
Six or 10 years in a row. Amazing. With this kind of responsibility, the city has shown, I really don't understand why this would not pass. I do believe everybody should vote for it.
Thank you.
Simple enough.
Thank you for your attention to that proposition. It's an important proposition, folks. It's important to members of the Cholo Chamber of Commerce and certainly important to this community. So thank you for your attention to that and those comments. Councilman Crittenen, this question goes to you first. Remember, now we'll go two minutes and then each comment after that will be one minute. This is regarding a bed tax. Bed tax has been a continuing conversation with local businesses since I have been here. Please explain your position on hospitality tax, a bed tax, or any variation thereof, and why.
Okay, as far as the bed tax or hospitality tax, what that really means is that a tax that the hotel motels charge individuals that stay at their facility, an extra tax, and that tax is set up to do advertising and things like that. I am basically against increased taxes in the city of Cholo. However, if the hotel and motel owners in the city of Cholo, as a group, want and agree to the bed tax, then I think it should come before city council for approval. But if they do not want it, and so far there's been a controversy one way or the other, whether they are for or against the bed tax, until they decide that they're for the bed tax, I will not push to have the bed tax approved.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
I'm against it. I don't believe, there's very many cases where the government can take money from somebody else and spend it on their behalf better than they could spend it themselves. Now, I realize they don't have the tax if they don't charge the people. And the other argument for it, I keep hearing is, well, it's not on our people. It's only on the people who come here and stay in the motels. And most people are used to paying it other places. Most people, it's done other places, don't cut it with me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kikavas.
Well, Rennie's right that this has been a controversial issue for many, many years. And I agree with this approach of if the hotel operators want us to go that direction, I would certainly be with that. I would approve it in that case. I think it could do a lot of good. We are a tourism community. We need to develop those events and programs that bring people here. And if they would see their way for that, I think that we should go that direction. Other than spending, having our local people spend their tax dollars and take it out of their coffers.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley.
Well, Mr. Applegate, you actually kind of made a point when you said it's been a topic ever since you moved here. That's kind of a problem in my eyes. Why has this been a topic this long? We should either be one way or the other. Most conflicts start because people are scared of losing something, whether it's money, whether it's pride, whether it's property. There's a fear of loss. I agree with Councilman Crittenen and Councilman Kikavas. Maybe it's time to bring the parties back to the table, figure out what people are really scared of losing. The business owners, the chamber, the council, the city, we all sit back down at the table and go, what is it that's stopping this from moving forward? I do believe in a bed tax. I do believe that there should be a clause in a bed tax, if the city does adopt one, that says that after 21 days, there will not be a bed tax. And the reason for that is to help the citizens.
Thank you. Mayor.
You know, it is controversial, but at the same time, we have a lot of events here. We have a lot of events that draw tourism here and the people who benefit the most are the motel hotel owners. And I just challenge them to come out and sponsor Cholo Day, sponsor the barbecue, sponsor some of those things back, which the bed tax would be great if the city imposed something that was strictly only for people outside of our community. I don't believe in a food tax that should go to the beverages and food that's spent here. But if they're coming out of our community and staying here, it's the same price that I pay when I go to Phoenix or somewhere else. But we would take a good plan and would have to know where those funds go before I'd ever be in favor of proposing a bed tax for our community. And then it would be a modest 2% or 3%.
Wonderful. Thank you for your attention to that. These next two questions have to do with economic development. One of them will be regarding local business and existing businesses here in Cholo, and then the other one will be regarding new business. So, Councilman Kelly, this one's to you first. Do you think government should help local businesses grow and develop? Why or why not? And if yes, what is your plan to help local businesses?
Yes, by staying out of the way. You know, don't be a problem. Be helpful. And I believe, because I interview people on a regular basis that come to Cholo to do business and to open businesses, what it was like to work with the staff of Cholo. I think the staff already knew that, but if they didn't, they know it now. And I get very good feedback. I've had people say, they have been in many communities to look at opening a store or a business, and nowhere have they received better accommodation and working with. Not to say they can do something that breaks the rules, but make sure they understand the rules so they don't get slapped upside the head with it, okay? So the best thing they can do is facilitate. I would have a very, very difficult time changing my position on giving away sales tax to get businesses to come here. When they want to come to Cholo, they're coming. But we just need to make it real handy for them. Thank you. Did I answer?
You did, thank you.
I agree with Gene. We need to get out of the business people's way and let them develop their business the way they know how to. We shouldn't have too many restrictions on them that it makes it difficult for them. We really should be the facilitators of that. We should provide them the information that they need to be successful and help them in that manner as far as assisting them with education, assisting them with the knowledge that they need as far as our culture goes and welcoming them to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley.
I actually have a different view than majority of my fellow running mates. My business, I had a lot of fights with the city trying to start my business. There was some planning and zoning issues. There was some engineering issues. There was some issues with employees of the city. So I don't entirely agree with them saying that this city is super-duper helpful towards small businesses. I do think that there was an effort made once some of the issues were brought to the table. And I do thank those parties that did solve that problem. This city's stance has been whatever it has been for a long time. It's time to actually change our stance and encourage, find a way to encourage younger entrepreneurs to move to this town. At the moment, there's not really all that much draw for someone to leave Phoenix to come up here. Economically, to start a business, it's not really here. We need to work on that.
Thank you. Mayor.
I believe the government needs to stay out of the way, but they also need to provide an environment. And that environment means good roads, good parks and recreation, good street structure, good schools, helping that environment so a business can thrive once they get here in the community. The city of Cholo has revamped its streetscape. We've spent a lot of money in making it more inviting, more appealing. We need to make sure that we continue to improve our broadband, our internet presence that we have, those things like that that a business can do business when they get here. But as far as regulating business, no. We need to make it as simple as possible for the process of going through planning and zoning. But we need to make sure that people follow the codes that are within the city and need to be met in that area.
Councilman Crittenen.
From my viewpoint, Cholo is the most business-friendly community in this part of the state. It has the fourth-lowest sales tax rate in the state at 2%. There's only three more communities in the state that have a lower sales tax rate that's regulated by the state. And we don't have any other sales taxes. Our taxes associated with that, like bed taxes, et cetera. Now, the planning and zoning and that type of thing is very important to not only the businesses in the city, but the residents. An example, would you want an all-night bar and music being played right next to your house? That's why we have zoning guidelines. And that's why when people are gonna start up a business, they need to find out what those guidelines are and where. up a business, they need to find out what those guidelines are and work with the city on them. Thank you.
That was yours, wasn't it? See, I told you I was going to mess it up, guys. You did. Councilwoman Kukavas, this next one's for you then. Are you in favor of economic growth and the subsequent population growth in Cholo? Why or why not? And if so, what proposals would you make to enhance that growth?
Let me repeat that.
Sure. Are you in favor of economic growth and subsequent population growth in Cholo? Why or why not? And if so, what proposals would you make to enhance that growth?
Yes, I am in favor of economic growth. I think it's good for everyone, and I, and obviously you have to take the good with bad. Not necessarily bad, but increasing our population isn't necessarily a bad thing. We are fortunate enough that we have a very large second home population where they come to our community and spend their dollars during the summer months. What I would propose, though, is that we make sure that we are appropriately planning for that growth, making sure that people and businesses are located in the right location and in the right area to where they can thrive and not impose, you know, sound impositions on their neighbors or that type of thing. You don't want an industrial business right next to a residential area. So, I think that the city has done a very good job of master planning and planning for growth and development, but we need to be very proactive about it and maintain the standards that we want to have to maintain a quality of life that we've enjoyed.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley.
I am definitely all for population growth and economic development in this town. I've heard before that some people fear that the city could outgrow itself or something to that extent. They don't want this to be a big metropolitan area. Fortunately, this is such a tight-knit community that will really never happen. We will always stay a good medium-sized. I do agree with Councilwoman Kukavas to continue building our infrastructure, continue building police, continue building, you know, for the first time since I've moved here, been here five years, I'm actually seeing homes built for the first time, and that in itself is just amazing news and very exciting for Cholo.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to just read a statement that I shared in the 2004 candidate forum a long time ago. "I'll remember what it was like to ride my bike down the middle of Main Street with no cars, just sip a soda at the drugstore. I'll remember the cow chills that are now streets that wind through our city, but I'll think about tomorrow and what we must do or so our children can raise their families in a beautiful, safe, and friendly community." And so, yes, I'm for controlled growth, but the city has done a lot. We just spent $10 million to make sure we have the infrastructure to handle the sewer and the waste that would happen here. We've bought all of the water companies around so that there's one standard now for our water. So, controlled growth is important, but the city, again, needs to provide just the environment.
Thank you.
The exciting thing, as far as I'm concerned, with the city council and the planning that they have done, everything that has been approved is not a short-term growth-type thing for the city. The wastewater treatment plant, that's going to be good for 20 to 30 years. The library here, that's going to be good for 20 to 30 years of growth with the city of Cholo, and those types of things are important. The combination police department, the sheriff department is going to be good for 20 to 30 years. So, the short-term type things that you go, oh, we should do this or that, you have to look long-term and make sure that you're providing for the citizens of Cholo on a long-term basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly.
Yeah, it'd probably be really, really difficult to just stay on par. You're either going to go backwards on an economic basis, or you're going to go forward. I think well-planned, it's been said over and over, so I just say amen to that. Not runaway growth. Again, not economic growth. If we were to just start in handing out sales tax incentive to get businesses to come to Cholo, we might get quite a few of them here. I just think that's a mistake. I'm for slow, well-planned, organized growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley, this next question goes to you, and just to let you know where folks where you're at and candidates where you're at, this will be our, the last question from me. Following this question, we'll have your closing remarks. So, here's a question, Mr. Bosley. What are the top two issues facing the city of Cholo? And what do you propose to address, I'm sorry, and what do you do, what do you propose to do to address those issues?
Some of the issues that are surrounding Cholo, I really, these, the fellow candidates, the current council have done a really good job of keeping this town going, moving in the positive direction, keeping control of the really big problems. I do, will, and continue to say that there is not enough. The city is, needs to become more entrepreneurial-friendly. We need to find ways to invite and bring younger generations here. The generation is changing, but there's, all of our, the high school seniors, they all go to college. Not many of them come back. Gone are the days where we stayed in the same town that we grew up. It's the day and age where people find a beautiful place where they want to stay and live, and that is what I have chosen to done. I want to expand out into Arizona and show the younger generation that is very bright why Cholo is a great place to live. We need to share our love for this town with the rest of the state. Other than that, that's my real main goal. I don't have a second.
Thank you.
I think going forward, we have to look at sustainability that faces us in our community, the things that we have going right for us. Can we continue to sustain those things in a very organized manner and continue to grow as we do? The other thing is quality of life. Quality life is one of the reasons that we have the great quality surroundings, but we have to make sure that we continue to have good quality life through parks and recreations, through our hospital, through our health care programs. As we invite more and more seniors to our area, quality of life is important to them as well, and that we get along. The unity, the cohesiveness of a community is always important with the issues that we're faced on the, on the big picture of society. It's the unity, the closeness that we need to continue to, to make sure that we develop families that care about one another and people who have love and respect.
Thank you.
I believe that challenges are opportunities for improvement. Now, what that basically means is that we need to continue to improve the city of Cholo, and those challenges will come along, and we have to be willing to address those challenges. As long as Cholo continues to elect council members that have the residents as their number-one priority, things will continue to improve. The residents are my number-one priority.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Just for fun, would you repeat the question?
You betcha. What are the top two issues facing the city of Cholo, and what do you propose to do to address those issues?
I believe, overall, that the government, city, state, and national, needs to do for the people what they cannot do for themselves, and look real hard at going anywhere beyond that. Of course, the federal government is the biggest abuser. The state is second, and I certainly hope we are last, and we need to provide those functions, sanitation, public safety, a certain amount of recreation. We don't have to provide everybody's all their recreation needs. They ought to be able to figure out a few things that are fun to do on this mountain without the city having to sponsor it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukavas.
Well, we've talked a lot about economic development, and I think it, as Mayor Seymour said, we do need to create an environment where businesses can thrive and grow so that we can grow jobs for our youth and so they can stay here on the mountain. We need education, advanced education for our youth so they can stay here on the mountain. Additionally, as we, as our population ages, we need to make sure that we have excellent quality health care that's available where they can access that, those specialties here on the mountain. We have a great community, and I think we need to just continue pursuing those issues that have been important in the past.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll move now to your closing remarks. Mayor Seymour, we'll start with you. You have two minutes, each of you, and we'll go in the same order.
Thank you, Jimmy. I'm just grateful for the opportunity to serve. I'm running unopposed, and I'm grateful for the confidence that the citizens of Cholo have placed in with me the past years and in the future years as well. We do have a great city. But we're also great because we've surrounded ourselves with really good staff and people who work for the city of Cholo as well, and we're grateful for the hours that they put forth and the things that happen. But most important is our residents, and it's the city, people who live here, who reside here, those people who recreate here, they're very important to us. And so, whatever we can continue to do to build our community on those measures slowly but surely, we'll continue to grow and continue to be a great area in the White Mountains. You know, when, we have a lot of going on, just, we're a hub of 150,000 people who meet here and serve here. But I'm able to serve on the executive committee with the state league of cities, and I get to rub shoulders with 26 other mayors and be able to talk with them and the challenges and things that they have in their community. And I can tell you that we have relatively small problems compared to some other communities, and it's because of the people who live here and the respect they have. And so, let's just continue what we do right, and I know that we make mistakes as a city. We've made few, and it's just like us as residents, but when you have a lot of people coming together and voicing their opinion, that's what's important. You know, we have real short city council meetings, so I challenge you guys to come out to those and listen to your, you know, your leaders and share with them your thoughts and feelings, because that's where we come together, and that's where we really hear from you. But thanks again for your support. Again, I encourage you to get out and vote for these candidates. I want to thank all of them for running and for being involved, but also vote yes for 407. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am looking to continue to serve on the Cholo City Council. I think right now that the city of Cholo is one of the best-run cities in the state of Arizona. It has low tax rates, excellent city services, parks and recreation facilities, state-of-the-art library and aquatic centers, and provides all this with a balanced budget, which is very important. I also think that being part of these city and on city council, you need to continue to get involved in other things that help the city. Right now, I'm on the Cholo Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I'm on the Transit Advisory Committee Chairman. That's our bus services that we have here in the city of Cholo. I'm on the Cholo Bluff Community Facility District, and in the past, I've been on the Industrial Development Authority, the Aviation Advisory Committee, Northern Arizona Council of Governments, and the Northland Pioneer College Foundation Board. Those things are important over and above being a city council member, is having the time and want to put in the effort to serve on those types of things. I want to continue to do that, and I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Rennie. Councilman Kukavas.
Thank you. I, too, am asking the voters to allow me to continue to serve. It's an absolute pleasure to serve on a council where our staff has recommended this past year and in other years recently with some surplus money to prepay debt. Instead of looking for a way to spend that money, oh, my goodness, how can we spend this? We got extra money. No, prepaying debt that is not yet due. I mean, there may be a day we're real grateful we did that, but that just shows you how conservative this city is being run at this time. And I don't know if somebody would care to argue with me, but I think most people that pay attention and watch city government would probably agree that I'm at least one of the best, if not the best, penny-pincher you got going for you, okay? And I do like asking questions to enlighten myself and the public. And, you know, when you look at your ballot, you get to vote for three people, and all I'm asking for is one of the votes. That's all. Just vote for me once, and I'll be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukavas.
Thank you. You know, I've had the honor of being part of the city of Cholo family for 36 years, over 36 years. Like I said, I started with the city as an employee when I was 18 years old, and literally the employees and my coworkers and the city councils have been my family for that, in addition to my other large family. But years ago, I used to take the minutes for the city council. At that time, it was longhand. We didn't have video. So, like I said, I've been honored to be part of that family. I enjoy serving my community. I love this town. I love all of the people that live here. We have such a wonderful community, and the people that live here are so truly giving and great neighbors, and I appreciate that neighborhood environment in our entire community. Thank you for all you do, and I would appreciate your vote if you want me to continue to serve, and I'm willing to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Bosley.
I will start off with agreeance with the mayor. Please vote yes on Proposition 407. I will also say it is an honor to sit up here with these five, well, four of you. Mr. Thomas didn't make it. It's an honor. These guys have done a wonderful job for our city. They've all put in the long haul. I have no public service experience. I'm just a business owner that wants to have a voice and be a voice for the people that don't have one currently. The council's been sitting and has looked the same for a long time. It's time for just a little bit of a change. I'm not asking to reinvent the circle. I'm not coming with groundbreaking ideas because these guys have already paved the way. I just want to help represent somebody that may not be represented currently by those currently sitting. I do thank you for your time. My business, we've started just a little shop back in the industrial park. We were able to build it, move it out to a highway. It's now a very nice corner from what was a rundown, almost field of a corner when we moved there. My business has been very successful. I understand the woes that a small business person has. I understand the business, the woes that a small family has looking for housing in this town. I understand all that, and I want to be the voice for those that aren't currently represented. Once again, I do thank you for your time, and I thank these fine folks for their time as well.
Thank you. And I'd personally like to thank each of you for being here tonight, and I would love to recognize you for the service that you have served our great community with and willingness to continue to serve or want to serve. And so, please join me in thanking them for that that they do. Appreciate that. Folks, we're going to take a break now for about three minutes. We'll have a commercial or two, and when we come back, we'll have the Navajo County Sheriff candidates here for some questions as well. So, thank you so much. We'll be right back.
I'm one unlucky guy. The chance of being involved in a robbery is 1 in 757. The chances of being struck by lightning is 1 in 750,000. Please fasten your seatbelts for unexpected turbulence. The chances of being a victim in an airline crash, 1 in 29 million. Hey, could I get some peanuts? The chances of being involved in a car crash are far greater than lightning strikes and plane crashes, and if you are texting while driving, your risk of crash increases 23 times. Now, I may be an unlucky guy, but I don't have to be part of that statistic, and neither do you. Drive responsibly.
I'm Essie Patha Merkerson, an actor, but I'm also one of nearly 20...
I'm Essie Patha Murkerson, an actor, but I'm also one of nearly 26 million Americans with diabetes.
And I'm Dr. Jeffrey Mechanic from the American Association of Clinical Endocrinologists, or ACE.
When I was diagnosed with type 2 diabetes, I learned the importance of knowing my A1C, which is my average blood sugar level, over two to three months. And I worked with Dr. Mechanic to set my A1C goal.
To help reduce the risk of serious health problems, ACE recommends many people with diabetes have an A1C of 6.5% or less. Nearly half the people with diabetes are not at this goal and a different A1C may be right for you.
That's why I worked with Dr. Mechanic to create my personal treatment plan, including diet, exercise, and medication to help me meet my A1C goal. Sometimes your doctor may need to change your treatment plan.
I encourage everyone with type 2 diabetes to talk with their doctor to help reach their A1C goal.
Visit bloodsugarbasics.com today.
It's harder whenever there's a bigger group. Pretty much a good day for me would be people leaving their hands off of me. I'm always called names. Everywhere that I go, there's always someone calling me names, calling me gay. I've been choked, thrown up against a wall, punched.
No way. Hi. Hi.
She actually said hi to you.
Music is a bridge between the material and the spiritual. As a blind person, you have to be aware that nobody can tell you what you can or can't do. You really have to try things. My wife, who is also blind, was a good cook. When she died, that's when I started Meals on Wheels. My name is Harvey Lauer. America, let's do lunch.
Drop off a hot meal and say hello. Volunteer by donating your lunch break at americaletsdolunch.org. Taking care of a family member can lead to plenty of questions. Fortunately, there's a place to get the answers for them and for you. Find articles, tips, and tools from experts and others who have been in your place. The Caregiving Resource Center at aarp.org/caregiving.
Parents, don't let teens take prescription drugs from your medication cabinet. Dispose of unwanted and expired drugs at a drug drop box near you.
Welcome back everyone. We appreciate you being here. This is the portion of the forum where we'll have and talk with Navajo County Sheriff Candidates. So I'm gonna review briefly just the top part of the format rules so the candidates have that fresh in their mind and so you folks out there know what's going on. So thank you again for being here. Here's the format and rules. Each candidate will be given one minute to provide an opening statement. The order of the response has been predetermined. Don Wilson will go first and then Graham and we'll rotate back and forth through that, throughout these questioning. After the opening statement, we will move to the questioning portion of the debate. At that point, the first person called upon will have two minutes to answer questions and then all others will have one minute to respond. Again, the, the order will be just back and forth, we'll rotate back and forth. I have up here with me Gary Moore and Jill Gray assisting. Gary is our, our president, board president for the Chamber of Commerce and Jill is assistant or helper in, volunteer in, in the, in the chamber and also one of our ambassadors. So we appreciate them. They'll be our timers and here's how that'll work. They have signs that signal at 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then a stop. And so they'll kind of let you know where you're at. At the end of the questioning period, we'll move to final statements and then from each candidate, we'll let them have two minutes for those. So with that, we'll proceed to the questioning, which will be an opening remark for one minute and we'll ask you to introduce yourself and let us know why you're running for city council. Ms. Wilson.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. What did I say?
City Council.
City Council. See, you gotta watch me guys, here for, for county sheriff. Thank you.
Okay. I'm running for county sheriff because I believe that you need a leader who will protect and defend the rights of our citizens. I am experienced. I have law enforcement experience. I have investigation, investigative experience. I have education. I have a bachelor's degree. I have a master's degree and I'm continuing that education. I believe that I am the person that will stand up for you and protect you. I am a peace officer. I, this is something that I just really, really feel compelled to do, is to run for office and to be the one to protect everyone here.
Thank you, Ms. Harbald.
I'm Graham Harbald. I'm running for Navajo County Sheriff's Office. Early in February, I was approached by several deputies and sergeants and asked, hey, we believe in you. We believe in what your training capabilities are and we believe in your goals and what your aspirations are for the sheriff's office. Talked to the family and we decided that, yes, we'll go ahead and run. So here we are today. I believe in education. I believe in our community and I have a vision to grow our sheriff's department. That's our biggest concern, is the retention issues and being able to keep the staff here. We're gonna discuss that this, this evening and thank you for giving us this opportunity to show the Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you both. Again, thank you both for being here. Okay, so Mr. Harbald, this first question will go to you. Given the recent tensions between law enforcement and certain sectors of society, what do you see as the role of the sheriff in, in better preparing your deputies to deal with these issues?
That's a great question. I believe in training. Our deputies need more training. We need more ability to have more scenario-based training. We have a very minimal training budget currently for our sheriff's office and we need to loosen monies up, bring grants in for equipment. We just recently took shotguns off the road to buy training equipment. That's a tool that should not be taken from our deputies currently, specifically given society right now and some thought towards our law enforcement. When it comes to the training and dealing with as a sheriff with society, I'm, I'm a mediator. The sheriff is a mediator and should act for his county with society, with the federal government, with anything along those lines that come in and inhibit the liberties of not only his officers but of his citizens. So I'm a firm believer in the mediation aspect of law enforcement. There's a lot of civil aspects to law enforcement and you need to know those. I, I'm off the road. I'm a patrol deputy, as has been said numerous times, but I know exactly what the citizens are dealing with right now in Navajo County. And, and that's the big picture. I'm running for sheriff of Navajo County. And so knowing those specific needs and knowing the wants and the drive of our citizens right now, I have a great idea, a great picture. We'll progress to that and hopefully in November, we'll be able to start seeing some change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
And I apologize, but will you repeat the question?
You bet I will. Given recent tensions between law enforcement and certain sectors of society, what do you see as the role of the sheriff in better preparing your deputies to deal with these issues?
Well, okay, I agree with my opponent here. Training is important. Currently though, Navajo County is facing a lot of budget restrictions and so I think that it's not, it's easy to say we're going to train them, but it's, it's not necessarily reality to get them out to training. So maybe we need to find, take somebody who's capable of training, teach them to be a trainer and have them come back and train in-house. We also need to bridge the gaps with our communities. We need to have our, our deputies out there talking to people. We need to have an open door policy where our, our citizens can, can interact with our officers. Thanks. Oh, that wasn't my timer. I thought it was. So we need to...
Go ahead and finish your stats.
Okay. So we need to have them, you know, to get with the community. Our community needs to see our officers in a better light.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. This next question goes to you. Employee retention is obviously an issue facing the sheriff's office. Why is that and how will you address that issue?
Well, employee retention, I mean, that happens everywhere. It's not just our, our sheriff's office. I do know that our deputies are not the lowest paid in the state of Arizona. And so I don't know that it's a budget issue. It may be, but until I get in there and look at it and, and talk to people and find out why people are leaving, I do know that there are higher-paid agencies. Cholo pays more, Pine Top pays more, but there's also maybe a morale issue. We won't know that until you get in and you start talking to these people and you find out what the problems are. And then you can assess the solutions to those problems.
Hey, Mr. Harbald.
I do know the concerns and the issues. The biggest is the leadership. Officers and deputies are being denied leave, being denied training. So it is a morale issue. I know that specifically from the road and working for Navajo County Sheriff's Office. That's why I was approached by the deputies. And how do we fix that? New leadership style. Currently, it's the hammer fist, my way or the highway, from lieutenants above. Our sergeants, we're grown up here. I'm from another agency. I've worked at two agencies. I've seen both aspects of it. I have a leadership style from the military that is receptive and I know I can fix it. I know I can keep people here. So it's not only retention, but it's also retaining those folks once we hire them. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Harbald, this question goes to you. And this is a hypothetical, but it's interesting. So if the power plant, if the power plant closes resulting in a loss of tax dollars, how do you plan to addressing loss of funding to the sheriff's office?
Well, I've sat through a couple of meetings concerning that and spoken with several people. It's gonna happen. APS is currently running gas lines south and that's gonna take a hit to us. Is it gonna be 2018? Is it gonna be 2020? We don't know that exactly yet. It is going to happen. We are gonna lose that money. So my goal is, I have a two-year plan when it comes to starting to be self-sufficient and using my budget currently for hiring and subsidizing that. Bringing in a grant writer, I have a grant writer on board with me already. They held several million dollars for other sheriff's office, which was larger than ours. And once we get that in, and what she was able to hold was my platform, or is my platform, excuse me. It's education, training, and retention. So with those three things specifically, I think I have a plan in knowing that that's gonna happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I believe that, yes, with the power plant, I've heard it's gonna close as well. And, and you know, we're already a, a county that's, that's short on funds. And so it's going to take, looking at everything, maybe doing a zero-based budgeting, maybe finding out exactly where everything is being spent and what is being spent on and finding out if there are any excess funds somewhere that we can draw from. It's going to the board of supervisors. It's, look, you know, we need to get creative in our, in our monies to find out how we're going to sustain our, our department and how we are going to operate with that cut.
Thank you. Okay, we just touched on this a minute ago, leadership style. And so, Don, this question goes to you. What leadership style will you bring to the sheriff's office?
Well, I'm certainly, I'm not a micromanager. I believe that we need to trust our, in our employees, but I do believe that, that people need to be trained and they need to be held accountable and we need to make sure that they are doing what they are doing with having the right, whatever I say, managers, you know, in the, in the deputies, you know, have the right sergeants, they have people that are following up, they're holding them accountable. I believe we have staff, we have a detention center that we need to make sure that the people that are in control know what they're doing and they know that the people that they are supervising know what they're doing. And I don't think that we need to micromanage something, but I think that we need to just make sure that we have the right people in place to make sure that the things get done.
Fantastic. Graham.
Well, I have a leadership style that's receptive. I, through my military and through my law enforcement experience, I've, I've learned a few things and that's listen. If your sergeants come to you with a concern, if your deputies come to them with a concern, you listen and if there needs to be a change, you allow it to occur for the betterment of your agency. When it comes to being fully receptive, just like my opponent just stated, you need to allow those specific individuals, your sergeants, your lieutenants, the right to make that decision on their own. That's not currently happening. So that's one of the things that I need to change. We will be changing within the leadership style in November. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, Mr. Harbald, this question goes to you. What should the relationship between the sheriff's office and our schools be and how do you plan to achieve that relationship?
Easy. Community service. This is a great question. I thoroughly, thoroughly believe that school resource officers need to be in our schools and not specifically for the protection aspect of it, but for mentorship. It's one of my platforms I've been speaking on for the last six months, is getting into our schools, bringing programs into our schools that benefit our children because that's where I'm gonna target our drug issue. If we get in, target our kids, help give them the opportunity to progress, making the proper choices, giving them the proper information on top of the staff and all first responders is what I want in the school, not just law enforcement. Because as soon as you walk in in a uniform, any uniform, it could be National Guard, it could be anything, firefighter, those kids are enthralled with you immediately and you have them. You're able to sit there and have the conversation with them and they're gonna listen to you. So if we bring that into our schools, working with all the outside agencies and firefighters, first responders, I'm pretty sure we can get that going. I believe in the percentage process, 33 per three, 33.3% of our kids, we don't need to deal with. Our parents are doing a wonderful job. They're successful. The next 33% is where I wanna target, our five to 15-year-olds. I have a 16, I have a 17-year-old that's kind of making his own choices already. He's a great, wonderful kid, but at that age, past 15, they're not very moldable any longer. And I believe that we need to target 15 and down. So, great question. I'm a firm believer in law enforcement and bringing proactive programs to our schools. I know we can get it done. There's forums specifically talking with currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Don.
Currently, I know that, that we have school resource officers and I know that my opponent is not necessarily speaking of school resource officers, but we do have police in the schools currently from the different city agencies. I do know that Casey Clark has a few programs involving officers in the schools. I have not myself looked into those programs. I believe that, yes, we maybe need an officer presence in there, but maybe it's more for talking to the high schoolers and recruiting them, maybe to see if they're interested in a law enforcement position, maybe allowing them to come and see what it's like and maybe getting some of these younger kids to be interested in wanting to do this someday so that we can, you know, expand our department as they get older, as they turn of age and can do it.
Hey, thank you for that. Ms. Wilson, this one's for you and I wanna prep this question because I, as I look at them, I got two questions that are similar. This question's about your single greatest issue that you wanna champion. There's another one farther on down the line that talks about the top three. So this one is, what is your single greatest challenge facing the Navajo County Sheriff's Office and how do you plan to address it? Top one.
The single greatest challenge facing, I think, the, the sheriff's office is actually the mental health issue here on the mountain. We have a major mental health issue. We have people that don't get treatment. We have veterans that don't get treatment. We have these people then that go and commit crimes and our officers, I don't believe are trained well enough to deal with this. And it's sad, but a lot of what's happening is these mentally ill people are going to prison, to jail and to prisons because we don't have care or treatment and we don't have officers that are familiar or know how to deal with some of this. I think we need training. I think that we also need to allow these doctors to come in and assess these inmates in our facilities. We don't have that currently. There is money out there to do it. It's just getting everybody to sit down and say, okay, we're gonna allow this to happen. We're gonna get our officers trained. And again, we have budgeting issues with that, but we'll figure it out. We'll get our officers trained, we'll get our jails to open up their doors, to allow people to be assessed so that we can get these people treatment, so that we don't have them sitting in jails or we don't have them go into prisons without, you know, ever getting the treatment. It doesn't do them any good. And I think that's one of our biggest issues on the mountain.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Harbaugh?
Currently, it's retention. Instead of holding a officer or deputy for his salary of forty to forty-three thousand dollars, we rehire. They're currently having to sign contracts upon hiring for sheriff's office or any agency to actually say, hey, we wanna hire you on, but you might not enjoy it, but I need you for this specific amount of time. I think it's a little outlandish. You need to create a venue for that individual to want to stay here and work and progress his career and know there's gonna be progression. By doing so, we're saving. For every time you rehire somebody, seventy-five thousand dollars through the system that first year, instead of holding an individual for forty to forty-three thousand dollars. So it's gonna be saving taxpayers' money on top of creating community service and community liaisons because everybody's gonna know, hey, that's our deputy in our area. And I'm a firm believer that retention, not only in the jail and on the road, needs to be established immediately.
Great, thanks. Okay, Mr. Harbaugh, this one goes to you regarding dispatch. What is your position on a regional dispatch service and why?
Well, there's multiple facets to this. There's the fire asset, there's consolidating dispatches, save money for multiple agencies. I do know that several agencies have stepped away from this idea. The placement of it, the cost of it. I sat down with fire, the fire guys. Chief Morgan has specifically stated that they've been giving chunks of money to local agencies and it's not being used for their needs. If it benefits the fire, I believe in ICS due to search and rescue. Local law enforcement typically does not use ICS like the fire systems do because on large, major fires, who's in command of them? The fires. That's, the majority of our large incidents are gonna be fire concerns on this mountain. So if everybody is on board, everybody understands it, to include the dispatchers who are gonna have to be displaced, we can't forget about them. They need to be involved with the actual sit downs for this. And if everybody is on board and we can progress with it, let's make it happen. Otherwise, we need to make sure that monies are being allocated where they need to be and used properly. The big picture is the betterment of the White Mountains, purely.
Thank you. Don?
I'm for anything that will better the processes when it gets to serving the public. And if a regional dispatch will help to do that, then I'm for it. I understand, though, that there's probably still some issues that are gonna happen with it. And I hope that those issues can be worked out before it's in place. I do think that if it saves the taxpayers' money or it saves the agencies' money, then it's a good thing. I do believe that having everybody in one area, like the fire and the police, that dispatch, then I think it might help with the communication as well and people aren't sitting on hold and then being transferred to some other agency and being on hold there. So if it better's a process, I'm for it.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson, this one's to you. This one's specific to jails, folks. What do you see at the top issue facing the Navajo County Jail and how do you plan to address those issues?
The safety and security of the Navajo County Jail is our biggest issue right now. I can tell you that we had an inmate attacked in February of 2016. He was attacked by the same inmate that killed a man in our jail in March of 2015, same inmate that was being held here by DOC. I think that the problem is that we're not big enough right now to house all of these people and keep them separated. And we have to take in DOC inmates because we need the funding, but we need to find a way to keep them separated. The one inmate in particular was reclassified to a minimum low custody. He never should've been reclassified. That was a mistake that happened, unfortunate mistake, because it may cost the county a lot of money. But we need to enhance our security. I have walked through that jail before and I have not been wanded down. I have not been ever searched, which is something that they don't do. I do know that currently they don't search inmates that are transported from the annex up until to the main facility. I have talked to officers who said, well, I didn't search them, they were sitting in jail. Well, anything can happen for, you know, a day or two in one jail before you're transported. I mean, so we really need to harp on safety and security. We need to protect our nurses, our staff, our civilians, and our deputies in that jail. And that's something that I want policies in place to ensure that happens.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harbaugh, second question.
I think she's trying to say retention and training, and that's been our topic since we've been speaking today. The other is being able to actually fund your jail. It's one of the major things that you have to do as a sheriff is be able to fund it. Currently, there's some documentation out that the federal government's gonna stop using private security firms, which is gonna open up for the local sheriff's office to be able to receive monies and receive those prisoners to be able to house. By doing so, that's gonna bring in some extra funding. And then also rebuilding what we've already lost. There's two organizations that have pushed away from the current sheriff's office. We need to rebuild those to bring that money back in so we can retain the staff and then, once again, training and education. It's also needed there as well. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, here's that top three question I addressed earlier. Mr. Harbaugh, this goes to you. And this is the last question I have before we'll go to closing remarks. I'm contemplating, folks, members that are here today, I'm contemplating in my head if we'd open it up to questions. And I've looked to you guys first for a nod, if you're okay with that. If I'm brave enough to do that, we'll see in about a second or two if I am. So if you got a question, folks, that you have to ask, that is for both candidates, that you need to know the answer to, then I would, I'll have maybe time for no more than two, but please think about those. The question I have for Mr. Harbaugh is, what top three things do you see as necessary to better the services of the needs of the citizens of this county?
Getting into our schools is number one. Number two, community service, community liaisons. And then also, number three, supporting the whole White Mountains. I've been several times up to the Navajo Nation and also with, down in the White River Apache Tribe. And their concern is always, well, we only see the incumbent, or we only get help, or we only get the needs during election season. My goal is to establish a native liaison team, which I already have, would like to keep them throughout because they're doing wonderful things currently. But establish that for the sheriff's office, not necessarily for the county, for the sheriff's office, to bring those specific needs on top of my deputies who are patrolling off reservation. So I can be well-rounded, we can address those needs specifically, get those taken care of in a timely fashion, and then also let me know where the needs are on those reservations and the concerns so I can take them to the tribal leaders. And that is one of the largest concerns I've heard from both reservations, is that specific need and support. So, education, community liaison, and also dealing with the whole White Mountains, not specifically where my voting popular is. Thank you.
It is the three needs for, you don't have to repeat the whole question, but the-
Top three things that you see as necessary to better the service needs of the citizens of the county?
Well, I think that one of the things we need to do is we need to, we were talking retention, so we need to see how many officers we're short, if we're short, where, you know, if we need to reevaluate where our officers are actually being placed. I think we also need to speak with our cities and our towns and our people. We need to have an open door policy so they can tell us what they need, what they see, what they would like to see out of our sheriff's department. Not that everything is feasible, but at least to get the input from the community. I also believe that maybe enhancing community policing and allowing our officers to go out there and talk to people and make contacts every day and give a positive view. I think that that would really help put the law enforcement in a better light.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll have time for no more than two. I just got a nod here from my president, how he doing, has a question. Folks, I'll want these questions for both candidates, not just one. I want them both to be able to answer. Don, you just went last, so we'll let you go first on this question from Gary Moore and then we'll take this gentleman here. And yeah, you can please address it at that mic and that will be fine. So it'll be two minutes and one minute.
Yeah. I was hoping to hear each of you address specifically your qualifications that you have as it pertains to managing a budget of the size of the sheriff's department.
I have, I can tell you right out, I have not managed a budget the size of the sheriff's department before. I have my degrees in administration of justice, my master's degree in administration of justice and law enforcement organizations. I am currently three classes down, which include finance and budgeting, with my master's degree in public administration. I take continual training all the time. I am one of those people that will go out and I will obtain the training that I need to do that.
Okay. Ms. Harbaugh?
Good question. I too, I haven't specifically ran the monetary value of what the sheriff's office has. I do have a line item budget of up to three point six million through the military and that's items. I did that also Oconus and Conus, which is in a combat area, and Ofconus, which is the United States. The concern now is, I wish the incumbent was here because he doesn't necessarily run the budget either, he has his own finance individual. It's knowing to have the people and getting the right resources to work for you that you know and trust. And I have those teams set in place already and it's a good question. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Sure, you had a question. If you can come to the mic and address that to both candidates. Mr. Harbaugh will address that first for two minutes and then Don will wrap up for one minute. We'll go from there to our closing remarks. Go ahead.
If the time and situation came to where the President of the United States decided to impose martial law, how would that affect the department and what policies would you personally put in place that might change the freedoms and liberties of the citizens in this county?
Good question. The biggest concern is, we spoke earlier of being a mediator as the sheriff. I do have a volunteered base tier plan and I will be using posse members to assist my needs, not necessarily the federal government's. If I am stated to have that occur, I will be fighting a tooth and nail in defending the rights of the citizens. When it comes to martial law, a hundred percent in effect, I ask you, what has brought us to that? To bring us to that point? That's my question. Was it alleviated prior? Were we able to alleviate it prior? Or is it just saying, you know what, everybody's gonna be locked down and here we go? If there's nothing that's led us to that, I can't specifically answer that question, the aspect of, could I have done something prior to alleviate it? But the big picture is, I will be calling upon our citizens to assist us and it's not gonna happen.
Ms. Harbaugh?
As a constitutionalist, martial law cannot be called in Navajo County if the sheriff stands up to the federal government and says, we are not gonna take your overreach. The sheriff can build a barrier between the citizens and the federal government and the state law says that I can call out every able-bodied citizen to stand with me, to build that barrier and say, we're not going to let you do it. You know, and we can do that and we can tell the federal government to stay out of our county and that they're not gonna come in here and impose their martial law here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, thank you for your question. Mr. Moore, thank you for your question. I appreciate you guys' attention to those and being open to let us do that. We'll now turn to our last remarks. Don, you have the first two minutes and then Graham, you'll wrap up with two.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to say that I do have experience, I have seven and a half years as a law enforcement officer. I've worked numerous divisions. I was assigned to detention, I became a training officer, I've worked with community policing, I've worked with personnel training, I've done out-of-state extraditions, bringing criminals back to, from felony warrants. I have worked in numerous different aspects of the sheriff's department. I've also worked in dispatch. I have nine years as a criminal investigator. Those nine years are equivalent to that of a police detective. I have about eight years with the city courts in Kansas. Again, I do, I am educated. I do have my education. I am continuing my education and I want to be that person to protect and defend the citizens of Navajo County.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you for this opportunity. In closing, I would like to point out, I'm the only candidate that is endorsed by first responders, not only on this mountain but in the state. The Arizona FOP, Nalia, APA, White Mountain Firefighters Association, and the Pine Top Police Officers Association. I've worked with these folks. I believe in retention, they know that. I believe in meet and confer, which is going to help us with retention. That's why I've reached out to these specific endorsements to benefit in retention. Apparently, they believe in me. So, coming to you this evening, asking for your vote on August 30th. If you have any concerns or questions, feel free to contact us via phone or email. And in closing, I have the experience in your county on the road. I've been to your residences, I've been to scenes within our county. So I know our concerns, I am addressing our concerns and Navajo County concerns. Thank you for this opportunity again.
You bet. Thank you, candidates, both for your attention here tonight and for your comments. Thank you for the audience for being here and those out in TV land, we appreciate your attention as well. I'd like to thank them publicly for their service that they have. Please give them a round of applause for the stuff that they've done. And of course, their willingness to continue to serve in this capacity, so we wish them both the best of luck. And that's all that we have for tonight, so thank you, everybody. You all have a good night.
Appreciate it. Glad I was here.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah.